Hi, Steve. This is the last edition of Voices from the Village. Tonight, we're going to talk about a brand-new council's next steps. I'm really, really pleased to have with me a couple of people that I got to know a lot better during this last political campaign in town. Council members-elect Sandy Brown and Chris Crone. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much.
You know, one of the things I was reflecting on as the brand-new council was campaigning and talking about the various things that they thought were important as progressive politics, and although that you were endorsed by a number of groups, one of the most important endorsements you had, of course, was Santa Cruz for Bernie and part of that Our Revolution. Tell us a little bit about that, you know, being kind of the standard bearers for the brand-new council, Our Revolution, you know, Santa Cruz for Bernie, because I think it's important for people to see where we're going with this. Sandy?
Sure. So, I mean, I think the, for me, the Bernie Sanders campaign was an inspiration for all of us, and seeing a lot of people become engaged in politics, people who had not been engaged.
Absolutely.
Across the age spectrum, across the class spectrum, ethnic, like so much diversity in the work that was done. And when Bernie said, "Bring our revolution home," I heard those words. And I decided, after many, many years of saying, "Never, never will I ever run for local political office," I decided that, yes, in fact, it's time to try to make some change here at home. So, that was what inspired me. And we can talk more about some of the concrete policies that I think are connected to the Sanders political platform.
And well, I'm happy that you ran.
Yeah.
Well, you've heard this story before, Steve, but I'm a journalist, and I covered the Democratic National Convention. I was a credentialed journalist back in Philadelphia, and I was just astounded when I saw the energy of the Bernie Sanders people. Hundreds and hundreds of delegates came from California, and they were wide-eyed, and some of them were wearing sandals and tie-dye, and they were mixing it up with the Democratic Central Committee regulars from all over America. And they were from all over America, and they had the idea that they were going to change their minds and get people to vote for Bernie Sanders at the convention, because they thought, "Well, Hillary's not the official candidate yet." And so, and that energy just, I was so moved by it, although I've seen some of these conventions, this is my fifth one, before, and I didn't think that was going to happen, but I appreciated their idealism.
Right.
And when I came back to Santa Cruz, I wasn't sure I was going to run. I met some people from Santa Cruz there. We talked about city council politics, and maybe can we get a group together? Can we try to, like, put some candidates forward?
Right.
You know, there were meetings that happened. A couple people came out of it, and then I decided at the last moment, I think I registered or signed up to run a couple days before, and the energy that Bernie people and the enthusiasm and the support. We just had a meeting, you were there, I think, last week.
Of course, yeah.
Over 200 people showed up. It's like, this is after the election.
225 people showed up.
This is after the election. This isn't like, it's like, hey, take a rest, you guys. No, this is, we're going to go, let's do it.
And it's interesting, and I think you may agree that this work is just beginning. You pointed out at the brand-new council celebration on Friday night that the brand-new council got three of the top five vote-getters in this election. Now, that is astounding. When you look at, you know, yourself and Sandy and Drew Glover, only 500 votes back, you know, that really shows that there is some momentum, there's some determination to not only have the two of you on council now, but in two years, you know, have run another group of people who perhaps will be endorsed by Santa Cruz for Bernie and maybe really turn that council into a progressive kind of council that we would like. Just for a minute, I want to just reflect a bit with you all. Chris, you were mayor in 2002?
Yes.
And, but your last political campaign was 2004, when you ran for supervisor.
That's correct.
How was this campaign different? You'd been away for a while, you came back, you know, you're walking around, you're talking to people, you are a candidate again. How was that, how was it different for you?
You know, I thought we ran a great campaign in 2004, and I never saw it coming. I really, I lost overwhelmingly for the Board of Supervisors.
Well, you ran against Neil Coonery, no means.
And I ran against the bookstur owner, and he was a beloved figure in Santa Cruz.
Absolutely.
Of course, the main difference was, we had a team. We had four of us out there knocking on doors. So, if I knocked on a door, inevitably, people would say, "Who else is running here?" "I don't know who else is running." Who would you, you know? And I would tell them that, you know, "We're endorsed by Bernie Sanders, Santa Cruz for Bernie, Drew Glover, Steve Schnar, Sandy Brown."
Yeah.
And I'm assuming, and I'm pretty sure the others were talking, and so we covered a lot more territory. So, it was a team effort.
Right.
And like I said also at that meeting, when the team leads, maybe the leaders will follow. And I really believe in that. And you all set the agenda, and we should be out there working as a team. It's not the personality.
And Sandy, for you, the first I had heard of your name, and I'm glad that I've gotten to know you a little better, was my good friend Bruce Van Allen. Bruce presses all the buttons for the many different organizations that I'm involved in, so we're out there. And every time I go over, it's a delight to talk to Bruce, who is so astute about not only the local but regional politics, worked for Bill Morden for many years. And he said, "Yeah, Sandy Brown's there." I said, "Sandy Brown? I'll be down Sandy." And he told me a little bit about you, and I came to, you know, to learn about your history in labor, history with the Police Review Board, things like that. But here you are, you're in Santa Cruz, you're running, you're making the determination to do that, and then you're out campaigning. What was it like for you after just kind of jumping in?
Yeah, jumping in, right? Jumping in was, is definitely the way to describe it. I, it was, it was an amazing experience. I have been involved in a lot of local electoral campaigns. Chris Crone's was one of the first campaigns I worked on. I was on the Citizens Police Review Board. I've been involved in local politics for a long time, but I've also stepped back a bit during my work as a sustainable agriculture activist and working on a farm and doing my graduate studies and teaching and unfortunately, outside of Santa Cruz. If anyone wants to get, find me a teaching job here in Santa Cruz, I'd be happy to get one.
Our listeners will take that to heed, and maybe you'll get some offers.
But, you know, to really dive back into local politics and talk with people, I mean, I just, and I'm going to say, John Leopold, thank you if you're out there, John Leopold. He's the one who said, "She who walks wins." And I spent so much time knocking on doors, seven miles a day, seven days a week, that was my average, and I learned so much. And I, what I learned really was that people all around this city have the same concerns and the same values, and what we need to do is find ways to get together.
Sure.
And work on them together, and not just let politics as usual run the show while we all complain about it.
And it's interesting, as we share Our Revolution, as we share the vision that Bernie Sanders perhaps has set forth, there is the old adage that all politics are local. And now, your politics are going to be local. These are the constituents that you'll be serving. You'll be sworn in tomorrow night at the end of business, so there won't be any action items, but you'll have an opportunity to address the city, your constituents, people put you in office. Individually and collectively, I have some issues that certainly were on the part of the Bernie platform, you know, rent control, Citizens Police Review Board, houselessness, things like that. But what are your primary issues as you take your seat on city council? What are the things you really want to start working on immediately?
Well, immediately, immediately, I just met with the mayor of Watsonville, Felipe Hernandez.
Great guy.
And a few other folks.
Great guy.
And we're talking about a sanctuary, doing, working together on a sanctuary city's ordinance slash resolution. And resolution, for those who might not follow it closely, is more of a feel-good document, a statement, almost like a mission statement, but has no teeth in it. And then there's parts of a resolution that could be turned into an ordinance that really will provide real protection for immigrants here. I think there needs to be some communication with, of course, other council members and get people on board, and, you know, we all need to be educated, and with also Sheriff Hart. So, that would be like something right away. Other things is, you know, I'd love to get a meeting right away with the university and just check in, this is who we are. Sandy and I talked about this, and maybe we'll just, you know, if we can, with George Blumenthal, and find out where we can start, because we talked about this, knocking on doors with so many people, housing was the number-one issue. And I'll say that homelessness and car break-ins, for me, the neighborhoods that I walked seem to be those three issues. And so, that's what Santa Cruz is thinking about, and I really want to reach out to other council members and see where we can get some agreement on these issues, because I'm sure, I know that they care about Santa Cruz as much or more than I do. I mean, I love this town, and I know they care.
Well, it's interesting, as you know, with the election of Donald Trump, and of course, there is this kind of pervasive fear that he gives more license with his philosophies to misogyny, to xenophobia, to racism, to the things, to prejudice against immigrants. And we had a march, as you may know, I don't know if you're involved, not a week ago or so, led by university students, went up Mission Street, down Laurel, and actually went to council in the last session. And when we got to council, all the council members came out and enchanted, at least, you know, say it loud, say it clear, immigrants are welcome here, outside of the council chamber. So, there is some seemingly existing support for that on the council members, because it is such an essential issue, and it is something that reflects who we are as a community.
Absolutely. And it's, having worked in many communities with immigrant workers and on immigrant rights issues in the policy arena, I feel like it's just, it's kind of just a no-brainer. Like, why don't we just make this happen now? So, I want to work on that, and I'm really happy that Chris has taken the lead on it.
Sure.
And we're, you know, I think, I think we can make it happen most immediately. There are obviously a lot of other issues that are going to take more time to get through.
But nevertheless, I do think that's something that has an immediacy. And I do think that your relationship, particularly with the Santa Cruz Police Department, that does have a policy and procedures manual, that does include within it a section that allows officers to make a determination about somebody's immigration status and perhaps refer them for ICE scrutiny or something. And that's something that you probably will have an opportunity to talk to the chain of command with, talk to Kevin Vogel, talk to Rick Martinez, and kind of take their temperature about that. Have either of you had any conversation with Jim Hart? Do you develop a relationship with him in terms of either 21st century policing or just around the immigration issue? Because I know he is very strong on that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Plans to, and I've heard good things about him.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've been at a couple meetings where he's been present.
Yeah, absolutely.
We talked up at the High Street Church. I think you were at that.
Yep, of course.
You made a nice statement at that.
Thank you. Appreciate that, yeah.
And I thought that it was a fantastic meeting, hearing from, probably 75, 100 people were there. It was really a good, good thing, and it was a way for the community to have an outlet. And that's another thing I would have promote while I'm on city council, is offering the chambers as an outlet for the community to voice, you know, what's going on in the moment.
Sure, yeah.
You know, if there's a shooting or, you know, we have, a lot of things are going on. Donald Trump is now president, and I think that most people in the community aren't really happy with that.
Yeah.
And we, people bottle up their emotions and feelings, and I believe the council chambers is the people's house, and you give them outlets.
I want to remind everyone that this is a call-in show, so you can call and talk to your council members-elect. You put them in office, and now you get an opportunity to ask some questions. 425-8848, extension 608848, 425-8848, extension 630. So, do call in. And I think that's a great point, Chris. I know that during the campaign, there was discussion had about having more council member and council participation from LGBT and youth, and really making it an open-door policy that come in and be part of the governing, you know, not just advisory process, but the governing process, if there are ways and avenues to do that. But, you know, that's a terrific philosophy to have. It's a terrific openness and transparency that I think, you know, exemplifies kind of both of your candidacies, so I'm very happy that you're here.
How we're going to put that in action now.
There you go. It's all about the implementation.
If I, if I can just, on that note.
Sure, please.
I just want to say, you know, we have had an amazing team of people working with us to get us elected. I mean, I didn't even expect this to happen, to be honest, really. And, and we've been talking a lot with some of the core group about how we keep that momentum going. Why do we just walk door-to-door during electoral campaigns? Why don't we go talk with people where they're at all the time?
Right.
Right? So, we're, we're working on a strategy for that, and we want to really work, go into the neighborhoods at least once a month, hopefully twice a month. We'll figure it out.
Sure.
And, you know, depending on what's, what's happening, what's on the agenda, and talk with people where they're at and get their thoughts.
I think that's a wonderful idea. As you know, Cynthia Chase will be, take the office of mayor tomorrow night when your folks are sworn in. Has really been one of the leaders of having City Hall Comes To You meetings on the east side, west side, around, but there's no reason why you shouldn't have things on that scale monthly, you know, because people really do want to. I'm sure that, you know, as, as somebody who was involved in this last election cycle and talking to a lot of people, they're really hungry for that, you know, they really want to be engaged, and they really want to know that their voice is heard.
You were out there walking.
No, I know.
I talked to bus drivers, I talked to business owners.
I know.
I see Steve, he's walking. Are you walking? Steve's walking. And so, you know the value of knocking on the door.
Of course.
And that's what we're talking about, more than the City Hall To You, where people gather.
Exactly.
We go to their door.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe 20 or 30 of us is what we're hoping for, and Sandy and I participating in that effort.
Yeah.
And then having a dinner afterwards.
Oh, wonderful.
A potluck to process what everybody went through.
That's great.
And to share information. That's the idea.
And just, and just really quickly, I'll say, you know, being a university instructor, I find that the one way of transfer information of information to students doesn't really teach them much. It's more about the iterative process.
Right.
So, and no offense, this is not any offense to the way that the city has been trying to go engage in the neighborhoods with City Hall To You.
Because that's a good effort.
Yeah.
Of course it is.
And, you know, people get the opportunity to, you know, but they write it down on a card.
Yeah.
And then somebody answers, you know, but there's no real conversation, and I want to see more conversation.
Yeah.
For example, I was at the last City Hall To You, and the Ocean Street Extension folks feel a little bit hurt over the whole crematorium issue.
Ah, yeah.
That became a major issue in their neighborhood. And then there was the, there's going to be 40 condos, condominiums built, and they came hoping there would be more of a discussion of that. And I had a little, it was funny, at the end, I had a little circle of like 10 of us sitting around, talking about this, these condos, there's no affordability involved in the project so far, and it's, it's not been approved yet, but they're very worried about it, because it's going to be a whole visual thing, and it's right there at Ocean Street Extension. So, getting more affordability, this is, this is what, you know, having this conversation, folks going, "If this was workforce housing, you know, teachers, 40 condos for teachers at an affordable price? I think we could do that in this community possibly." I mean, but, but this is just 40 condos, vacation rentals, or second homes for folks.
Yeah. And I want to certainly mention, in a broader context, before we leave tonight, about the January 20th strike that's being planned, the national strike, because I know that we are all interested and involved in that. But as far as local is concerned, you, of course, found this idea that the main type of conversation during this last election cycle is affordable housing, and particularly the relationship between the city and UCSC and the pressure it puts on our rental market. And you both had interesting and novel, and I think potentially successful approaches of that. Let's talk a little bit about that, now that you're going to be a seated council member, although no action items for you tomorrow night, but in two weeks, you're going to be making policy. And what are you going to be thinking about in terms of the affordable housing that we've been talking about for the last three or four months?
I think it starts with developing some relationships with people on council and seeing what we, what we can all agree on. During the campaign, I thought it was a reasonable campaign. We talked about a lot of issues, I mean, just in, and I think, I see homelessness and houselessness intimately and very much a part of affordable housing and what's going on at UCSC and not enough housing for students. But we talked about it in terms of like real policy, like 25% inclusionary, which means if you build 100 units, 25 of those are going to be affordable, and the housing and urban development sets that, that price, although we know that Ben Carson now is going to head that department, which worries a lot of us without much previous experience in housing.
It is to weep. But anyway, yeah. You think you would be successful in, as was discussed during the campaign, in abolishing the, in Lufthes?
Well, if not, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I think there's a possibility of onsite construction requirements.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we have, we will have the votes to abolish in Lufthes altogether at this point. And honestly, the conversations I've had with some people have reminded me that it may not be the best-case scenario, because that's all ownership housing, right? So, we, you know, rental housing is my biggest concern.
Absolutely.
In a community where 60-plus percent of the community rents. So, but I would like to see a minimum of 25% onsite housing, affordable housing built in any new development project. I think that, and I ran on a campaign of real public benefit and real community engagement, neighborhood engagement in any and all project, development projects. So, I mean, that's kind of my overarching concern, and I think it, I mean, I think it can be done. And I've talked with people across the, albeit limited political spectrum in our liberal town, about, you know, the possibilities of that, and there are people on, you know, in different camps and within there that say, "Yes, it absolutely can be done."
And as a person that has been an advocate for people experiencing homelessness for some time, I don't go back decades as some do, but I appreciate your bringing this up, engaging in this right now, because I think there is a difference between building affordable housing, building workforce-supportable housing, maybe taking some of the pressure off the rental market with university-built housing somewhere near campus, and transitional housing for houseless people. People who are now in the emergency shelters, and I'm now involved with the winter shelter operating that. I also do coordination for the faith community shelter. Those are emergency shelters, and we try to make those transitional as much as we can, but we need transitional housing available, you know. Is there some ideas of how we can get some of that built?
Phil Kramer told me that, one of his biggest issues, he runs the Homeless Services Center, and he can get somebody back on their feet, but there's, nobody's taking Housing Authority vouchers.
Yeah.
And so, that's what he said. He said, "If you could get, figure that out and get people to take the Housing Authority vouchers, maybe create some incentives for landlords beyond the housing voucher," because I've had a personal experience with housing vouchers, and, you know, they're, you know, that's a decent rate of housing. They're offering what one would think is an equitable amount for renting a place. It's not gouging.
But there's cherry-picking that goes on, right, within that system, because there are people who look good on paper, who get the HUD, the Housing Authority Section 8 voucher housing, if there are people, if and when there are people who are willing to accept those residents, tenants, and then there are people who have families or who don't look so good on paper, who are on a waiting, a 15,000, let's not forget, it's a 15,000-person waiting list.
Yeah, Robert Singleton said, yeah.
Somewhere around Santa, in, within Santa Cruz County, and that's before Ben Carson. So, we, we got a lot of work to do.
Sure. It's a twofold problem, really, in my mind, is that the scarcity of units and the reluctance of landlords to accept Section 8 housing vouchers. If there was a way for the city council to engage in some policy approach to try to incentivize that, so that landlords say, "Yeah, well, I'd be happy." One thing says, "Oh, dear, it's a guaranteed check. How come you're not taking it? You're going to get your money every month." But then there's an additional layer of bureaucracy that landlords don't have to, don't want to be involved with, or there are various disincentives that you, as, now you're policymakers, you know? And that's the difference between me, or somebody who's out advocating for certain things, and I can try to influence policy, but I don't necessarily make policy. I make opinion, maybe, but I don't make policy. And that's, that's the great opportunity you have, you have, Sandy have.
School us right now. So, we have a situation where, you know, the warming centers and some churches have stepped up, and we're all in appreciation of that with food and shelter. What, what is it that city council right now needs to do, from your perspective, who's somebody who works with homeless people and works with the most vulnerable people in this community?
Well, I think they need to make a real commitment to the establishment of year-round walk-up shelter in Santa Cruz. I mean, absolutely, positively, you need to do that. And I think we can do it. There certainly is space available to do that. There isn't the political will to do it, which is, I think, something that you and Sandy and people that you can form consensus with on council can exert. There hasn't been that political will. And so, I think that's, that's something to do. And within that, of course, as you have a true walk-up shelter, you can also have counseling services available. You have transitional, you know, I learned one thing, I'm, the associate faith community is in partnership with HSC, and the county is now running the winter shelter. And one thing, and I'm a member of the AFC Leadership Council, I'm not a faith guy, but they brought me on because I have some community standing, and I can do some, some work for them. But one thing I learned from them is that they're, they're all about transition. They're not about maintenance. They're not about, you know, "We're going to help somebody today, and then we're going to help them do the same thing tomorrow." They're all about transition. So, if you got some way to make year-round walk-up shelters, emergency shelters, don't abandon the idea, but make it transitional in some way. Those are things that you can do as, there just hasn't been, in my view, as somebody that has not been able to win a seat on city council, the political will for it. And, but I do think that there's a lot more understanding of the value of those programs, perhaps as options, and that's, that's all that I could suggest.
So, can, and if it's okay, if I turn my gaze to the interviewer here and become the interviewer myself, not just the interviewee. Yeah, so, you know, so we can make a commitment to that, and I am also really, really disturbed by the lack of resources that have been put in at the city level, the county level, I mean, not to, like, let's not even talk about the state and federal government, evisceration of funding for homeless services and transitional housing. Like, I mean, we are facing a really, really uphill battle at every level.
No question.
And, you know, so I want to do everything I can to try to make this, you know, to put more resources from, you know, the city, from, get the county, you know, shake, shake the tree, right?
All right. Here, let me do this.
Oh, we got a call.
Hi, you're on Voices from the Village with council members-elect Sandy Brown and Chris Crone. You have a question for them?
Yeah, you know, I hear you guys talking about the homeless problem in Santa Cruz, and why can't we find somebody in the, in the private sector, possibly some of the big companies here that are pulling out millions of dollars from our community to help us address this issue, so it doesn't just fall on the shoulders of the city? Maybe, maybe the private sector could see it as advantageous to help with the warming center and help housing some of the houseless.
Thank you. Great question.
I'll take my, I'll take my question off air.
Amen. Thanks so much, caller.
Amen, brother.
You know, one of the ideas we had, not along those lines, not exactly that, although the city bike program in New York City, you know, the Citibank underwrites that program, something, I think that's what the caller's talking about. We had the idea of 1% to 2% of the hotel tax would go toward transitional housing and a 24/7 shelter. That would be a down payment. So, that's one of the conversations I'd like to see, to see started.
Were you involved in the measure in 2000 when they were going to raise the top, the Chancin Act, the tax for people who don't know, 1%, and designate 30% of that to homeless services, which actually, as I, and I wrote an op-ed recently, that it actually passed, but not by 2/3?
We listened to the consultants, and a lot of people don't know, if you pass it by 50% plus one, it goes into the general fund.
Oh.
If you pass it by 66%, 2/3, it then is designated forever for that. So, you have this thing where you have the consultant saying, "Oh, well, people don't, depending on how they feel about the politicians at that point in time, you guys are going to use it for something else." I've found that stuff that's past 50%, that goes into the council budget, they usually stick to it. They usually say that's where that money's going to. There are some designated, I mean, they're not designated, but they're, those funds are for particular projects.
And so, I'll just say, I think I was sitting in this very seat when, just to speak directly to the caller's question about private, private developers and private corporations' investment to the caller's question about private, private developers and private corporations' investment in helping to fund the services we need. I was sitting in this very seat when we talked, Chris and I talked about the conversation we had while we were driving from some meeting that was somewhere, I don't know where we were, I can't remember where we were, past the Sports Authority Building, right there on River Street, that's sitting empty. I mean, there are plenty of spaces that could be made available. And the city does have some authority. Well, not the sports authority, but we have some authority, we have some ability to negotiate those deals. And I think that, you know, we've, we've just done, we've fallen down on the job.
And my thought would be, and it goes back to 2011, I think, when they had this huge summit on homelessness at Cabrillo, if any of you recall that, out of which came Smart Solutions. And they had a keynote speaker there, it was from Los Angeles, said, we've done all these great things, but they're able to do those great things because their chamber of commerce, their business community, the people they bought into helping, you know, do what they could to provide transitional services for homeless. What we have not had in my experience here in Santa Cruz is our business community, our retailers, our Chamber of Commerce really buying into that as well. I do think that's something that as a, as a united consensus-building city council, maybe you could exert influence on those folks, maybe step up a little more and maybe provide something. I understand that, you know, the deep pocket is the developer, the deep pocket is the logic industry, and I think that's fine. But there are also semi-deep pockets that exist all over Santa Cruz because we are a retail-driven community, so.
And I think we're a compassionate community, like, what we heard knocking on doors wasn't say, like, oh, round them up, get them out of town, lock them up. No, people are concerned when they see someone, there is a feeling of compassion and how can we help this person? And I think, not to disagree with you, but I, through Second Harvest Food Bank, for example, there's a lot of businesses that are stepping up and contribute a lot to that program. And a couple of other programs, too, they can give some more. And I think that we'll be cheerleaders for business community and working with other council members to, you know, drive that, you know, resources for homeless services.
So, some of the more serious issues, not to say that these aren't, because these are very human rights, you know, civil rights issues, I think, that they're going to be confronting you as you get onto council courses, not only 21st Century Policing, we just mentioned it before the show started. But there are going to be some discussions of body cameras that are going to come up, you know, you're going to be presiding over that. And just this whole idea of more police accountability and transparency. What's your approach going to be when you're relating to your, the chain of command of your police department, your rank and file particularly, about how to convince them that maybe they need to modernize in that respect?
I mean, we talked about this on the campaign trail.
I'm going to let you start on this one.
Because Sandy and I were supporters of, you know, some sort of community police review. And that was disbanded in the late, I guess, about early 2000s. And I think that when the vote, I mean, you might have been there, that forum took place, there were, how many candidates up on the stage? Out of 12, 11 people running, I think there was nine that said, yes, I would support some kind of community, you know, police review board. So, I think going in that direction, having those conversations, you start with a task force, you branch out, you bring in university people, you bring in the police, you bring in other council members, and try to, you know, along those lines. As far as body cameras, I think that's going to be, is that going to be on the agenda also on Tuesday?
As far as I know, they're going to be talking about that. In fact, the ACLU, of which I am a member, the local, is going to be there talking about it, and some other, you know, social justice organizations. We really want to know, want to have more information. The sheriff's department, through the 21st Century Policing, is bringing their body cams online next month, so that's, they'll be having body cams.
And you're supportive of?
I am. I, having talked to, when Rudy Escalani was bringing on the body cams online in Capitola, we went over to the ACLU and talked to him about it, just to kind of inform him about what we thought were important policy considerations. And I do think that they are very valuable. I think they do cut down on incidences of police overreaching and police overreacting, also cut down on citizen complaints, you know, because there is some kind of a video and factual record for that. So, I do support body cams. You know, it's an issue on which reasonable minds certainly are going to differ, there's no question about it. But again, you know, I'm sitting here with two folks who are going to be making, to the extent that you can influence police policy, which, as you know, oftentimes comes down through the city manager's office. Nevertheless, you have an important voice in that. And Chris, you know, you and I were involved in the Bearcat and the militarization, the trend or militarization of police departments, and that was something that was very important to bear in mind as you really are relating to our police department in general, whether or not they're going to be public guardians, as the 21st Century Policing practices say, or they're going to continue to pursue kind of a warrior cotton mentality.
Guardians, warriors. Jump in here, Sandy.
Sandy, you're on the police review board, so I value your opinion about that.
I mean, I, you know, having served on the citizens' police review board.
Yes, you did, absolutely.
And, you know, thanks, Chris Coon, for giving me that appointment. Back in the day, by the way, when each city council member actually got to appoint a member of commissions, and we don't have that anymore, so that's something else we want to work on.
Something else we like to talk about.
You know, I, I met a lot of really, really committed police officers, people who want to make, who have the same values that we do, who want to make this a better place for everybody. And so, I don't want to, when I, when I say, when I talk about, you know, in the abstract police accountability and some of these questions we're talking about, I don't want it to sound like I think all cops are, you know, out to get the poor people. You know, I mean, that's not what the city is. But at the same time, I think that we have, there's a culture in our law enforcement, and I think it's, you know, more of a top-down culture that has neglected to, to address the real concerns of our community. And I think that there, so accountability is an important issue. And, but at the same time, I don't want to say that to denigrate the good work that people are doing, right? So, it's, you know, I know it's a delicate dance, and I have, I'm full, I'm open and fully intend to work with the police department and its administration, you know, on any and all issues, to make sure that they do their job and they have the resources to do their job, and that it isn't at the expense of, you know, people who are marginalized.
That the more we know about the police, the better the police are going to be, you know? And then there's a partnership, and there's a real, and that's what I saw the review board as a vehicle. It wasn't the only thing, it was a piece of this puzzle of community policing, the guardian warrior culture, you know, breaking that down, and what do we want, offering choices to the community. And I wasn't really, you know, that psyched on the Bearcat when that came around.
And, so, but here's the thing, I mean, I'll just, the last thing I'll say about it is, it doesn't have to be polarizing.
No, of course not.
I mean, we don't, I'm not coming to, the reason I brought it up in that way is because it doesn't have to be polarizing. It's a conversation.
The problem, in my view, anyway, was the reason, and you go back to the Bearcat, the reason that was polarizing because of lack of transparency. Had the police department come and said, you know, we're going to get this grant from Homeland, and we're thinking about buying this armored vehicle because we think we need it, and let's discuss this openly, instead of bringing it to council and saying, hey, we're buying this thing. And that's what really disappointed people, you know, that there was, it was a breach of the public trust. And it's a particularly important time, I think, for new council members like yourselves to be engaged in that process, because this is, this is a unique time in history, I think. And particularly, as I say, when politics are local, there are a lot of things that are going to be changing in our community now and in the next eight or 10 years particularly. And if there is some new slate two years ago that brings three more progressives onto council to join you and Sandy, then there really will be an opportunity to make some headway, make some traction. But I envy you that, because this is a great time to be a public servant.
And I don't want to, like, take away from the council members that are there now.
Absolutely not.
I think we can form some alliances and build bridges, work on what we all agree on, rather than looking at the stuff we hadn't agreed upon in the past. Let's move forward.
Yeah. I bet, now, one of the things was, of course, on the Bernie platform and the pledge that you all agreed to was about rent control. You think there's a, what are the chances of rent control? I have written, been outspoken about my support for rent control. I've seen the model ordinance in San Jose work, I've taken a look at that. I think there's some parts of it that can work in Santa Cruz, although we're certainly a unique community. But, but that was something that was part of your campaigns. Where do we go from here on that?
Oh, Sandy, do it first.
Well, I, I mean, I would just say, we have to accept the fact that the state of California has changed the rules, you know, changed the rules of the game to some extent. So, there are a lot of limitations on what we can do. But in the conversations that I had with both homeowners and renters all across the city, and from Schaefer Road to the harbor, basically, people were mostly interested in exploring rent stabilization, some, some form of rent stabilization, because what's happening in this town, as we all know, right now, is out of control. And so, I think it, I think it's something that we should explore. I mean, I think it's, it's something that's going to have to go to the voters. I don't know that we're going to have four votes in the next two years to put it on the ballot, which is unfortunate, but it's certainly something that I want to talk about actively with all members of the city council.
Yeah, but you're hopeful.
But I know, I am hopeful.
We haven't gone there yet, because we need to have that, that conversation about, you know, and then there's also, you know, petition process, too, where people go out and get signatures.
Sure.
And there's a bunch of things that we can also do to create more affordable housing, like, we're talking about real estate transfer taxes.
Absolutely.
When people sell their house.
Yep.
Why shouldn't the community benefit when your, you know, your, cost of your house went up an ungodly amount without doing much, you know, because this is a desirable place to be? So, why not share that with, you know, the community as well? And, you know, there's, so there's places we can work around, many pieces of this puzzle, too, this.
Absolutely. And there are ways that we can do that without, you know, because I understand there are people who genuinely need the increment on their home. They've lived in their home for all those years. It's their retirement, right? It's, or it's, you know, it's their child's college fund. But there's also speculative transfers that happen. And so, there are ways that we can get to the community benefit in those transfers.
Well, it has value, because I do think that it does stabilize the rental market. And people have to understand, when you are marketing it to your constituents, that, you know, rent control doesn't mean that every unit is rent-controlled, only certain units really after a certain date are rent-controlled, there's only a certain percentage of them. If you look at the San Jose Model Ordinance, not everything is rent-controlled over there, but parts of it are.
Back to the university.
Absolutely. There you go, please.
Thank you.
There you go, absolutely.
It is, you know, they're bringing in people, making promises, that they, frankly, they can't live up to, because they're only housing 51% to 53% of the students, depending on what statistics you're looking at.
Right.
But they're bringing in even more people next year. And we saw it in the campaign, you knock on a door, the apartment was, just a couple years ago was 2,100, and now it's 3,000. You got four students living, two in each bedroom. And I work with students, I work in the university, I love this town because we have a UC, and that's a big deal. But you cannot, you know, get ahead and bring in more students than the town can accommodate. So, there is a, this conversation that needs to take place, and we need to work together. And it could be off-site housing, could be Swift Street, could put up some student village, limit the students in bringing cars, and have shuttles going up the campus back and forth. I mean, there's a lot of things we could do.
So, protecting the environment, you know, it's all bound up in that kind of, you know, protection of the environment, finding affordable places for people to live, but making it possible for people to live, you know, to go to school here, to work here, to raise their families here. And that's the thing that really struck me, as, you know, I talk to people, walking around, and that's a major concern for them.
And so, and just back to, excuse me, back to the UC housing question, you know, we're kind of going around full circle here, but I want to say.
It's important, yeah.
Chris's point about, like, why, why isn't there, I mean, the university has access to a whole bunch of space. I mean, we talk about corridor plan and all of this housing getting, you know, and eastside residents feel like it's getting dumped on them, it's high-end housing, and it's getting dumped, right? And there's a lot of space there that, I mean, UC Santa Cruz students would love to live over on Swift or Natural Bridges Road, in some of those areas that are being, you know, like, what is it, is it the Marriott, or is it the Hyatt? I can't remember which one's getting built.
On Broadway?
No, no, on, like, on, over there on, near Schaefer Road, in the end.
I think that was Marriott.
That could have been.
Fairfield Inn, it's called.
That could have been student housing, you know?
Well, and you're right, there is room out there, as you know, the Homeless Garden Project, at some point, sooner or later, is going to move from where they are out there in Schaefer up to the Pogonet, and that property is owned by Barry Swenson, so there is an opportunity.
What's the timeline on that moving?
You know, it's, as I say.
They've been talking about that since I was on the council, 15 years ago.
And as I say, talking, talking to Dr. Paul Lee and people like Derek Ganshorn, people like that, it seems to be that they're, once they work out the water, you know, situation up there, then they'll be able to, they've got 11 acres up there. It's not that they don't have the land, it's just they need the water. And they do have the funds to do it. So, as I always say, my understanding is that it's sooner or than later, so that being kind of a near-term idea in terms of policy, strategic policy, might be something to start thinking about. With, you know, with, with your connections, Chris, to the university, you're there, you know, you're, you're the man on campus, you have the feel for the campus, the pulse of the campus, and you know the players, you know the stakeholders. And that's important, I think, particularly when you couple that with the fact that you are now a sitting council member.
Well, this campaign, you know, the leg, I would say, the legs of this, of this table that we won by was, were the students, and they were housing activists, and they were, it's really a stool, because it's the east side folks who are struggling right now with this so-called corridor plan, where they want to put a lot of market-rate housing all along SoCal, all along Water Street, and the neighbors feel like they weren't being heard. And if, I don't know if you, we haven't done the whole data crunching yet and where we got our votes from and stuff, but I think we walked a lot on the east side, we walked a lot on campus, and I think we put together something that we hope in two years, you know, that we keep this walking continuing, that we can develop this into something even greater.
So, will you, as council members, still be advising on the SoCal Evernac Corridor Plan? It's just, this is a strategic plan that's just being developed now?
Hasn't been passed yet, so it's still being discussed.
I mean, I think what alarmed people out on the east side was that they were going to raise the height limitation to 77 feet. And people say, well, they're going to build an urban canyon out here where I live, and what's I going to do to my neighborhood? So, naturally, they weren't too happy about it. But it's good to know that you have people who have some sensitivity to that, and have talked to those people, you know, about their concerns.
I want to qualify. I do want to qualify that by saying, it hasn't all been passed, but the general plan has been changed. So, we have to work within the, those limitations, right?
For revisitation.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that part of the 2030 master plan, is it? The general plan?
The general, yeah, the 10-year plan. So, you know, we have some limitations to work within for the time being, and all the more reason that we want to get out in the neighborhoods and be working to get enough votes on the city council that we can do that when the time comes. We have, there's a lot of work to do. There, you know, the corridor plan is, is a master plan, and every project is going to be, that hasn't already been approved, is going to come to the council. And I think we're going to work as hard as we can to make sure that those plans have as much public benefit in them, if they happen at all, as possible.
And a lot of those things, the plans, people should understand, there's the Ocean Area Plan, Master Plan, there's the River Street Undergrounding Plan, there's all these various things that have been passed, and presuming there's ever enough funding to do it, you know, the city will be able to do those things. But, Chris, you were talking about council members no longer being able to make specific appointments to commissions, and I believe that, that commissions advisory boards are an essential part of democracy in Santa Cruz, and one that, that oftentimes ordinary citizens don't get a voice in. Is there any way to, to roll that back, you know, to revision that particular council policy, so that you can have people, like, for instance, your friend and ours, Candace Brown, who would be a wonderful planning commission member, as you pointed out, you know? What's the possibility of being able to do that?
Sandy brought it up tonight, because we've talked a bit about this. It seems undemocratic on the face of it, when, if you have four-person majority on the city council, they can put on seven members of every commission, instead of a one-to-one city council member, you know, appointing their person they want to have on the commission, which is supposedly the body represents the city of Santa Cruz, but the commissions aren't in that direction. So, I think, I'd like to see that, that change, where you had a one-to-one. It does exist on the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. It used to exist.
Which I've been trying to get appointed to for as long as I can remember. Just, I've got a word to specialize.
Hey! I'll appoint you. Capely.
No, but those are, the kind of housekeeping things seemingly, but that are really important about how you feel really democratically governed. I mean, you, again, I go back to that, because I'm really delighted to have you here, and really feel privileged that I've gotten to know you a lot better during the campaign than I did. than I did, but you are going to be the people who are going to be leading our city now, you're going to be policymakers, you're governing, you know, my community. And I appreciate your sensitivity to houselessness and to rental crisis, and to, you know, what the police do in terms of transparency. All those things are going to be challenges for you, to, and still be able to share that kind of vision that you have, what you think is good for our community.
And his kind, I'm going to go right to you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Well, I'm just going, I was going to say the same thing, so, you know, mine, the Vulcan mind meld.
Yes.
So, you know, that's part of the, those commission posts are not just ceremonial. Chris and I have been talking about how, like, can't we just get a city council packet for dummies, because you get this 300-page packet, and you've got to read the whole thing, and try to figure it all out, and you have meeting, meeting, like, death by meeting, I call it. Having, having smart and thoughtful and, you know, dedicated commissioners is what helps us do our jobs better. So it's not really just, you know, ceremonial, it's really, it's a really important part of the process for citizen involvement in, you know, democratic process, right? So, and then now I'll let Chris say what I, the other thing I was going to say.
No, I was going to say, but I was going to add about Steve, every, we had 12 forums, folks, and it was, sometimes brutal process, they put you through this grinder to get to be on the city council. He, he had this eloquent statement every time about working people and standing up for working people's rights, and housing, and jobs, and, you know, it definitely washed over all the candidates, and, you know, Sandy comes from, you know, a distinct labor background with United Farm Workers, and she was just like, really happy to hear that, and I was totally happy to hear that.
Absolutely.
And it was a constant thing that we didn't forget, and we, I hope we kept it up after you left the campaign.
Yes, you did, and it's much appreciated, because I do think that that's, that's extremely important, and I will say a final thing about the value of commissions. One of your fellow council members-elect, Martine Watkins, was the chair of the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women for a long period of time, and so she has, you know, that kind of sensitivity in terms of why those commissions are so important. And that was really part of our connection, in fact, she was on the ACLU board when I came onto the board, so I know Martine, and congratulations to Martine, and to Cynthia as well. You know, the city has chosen well, you know, and for the most part wisely. Particularly, as Chris, what you said the other night resonated with me, is that the brand-new council, and again, you guys are still building for something, had three of the top five vote-getters, you know, and that's remarkable, it really is. In Santa Cruz, in, I don't go back a long way in electoral politics in Santa Cruz, not more than 2008 or so, but I haven't seen anything like that.
And Drew Glover plans to stay in the mix.
Yes, he stands.
Probably Steve also, but he hasn't revealed his.
And a shout-out to Drew, who ran a fantastic campaign, and Steve Snar, fantastic.
That ghetto blaster on the back of your bike, if you're listening.
But I know that as you, take your seats as council members, you'll also be thinking about that larger picture about, you know.
Absolutely.
What progressive things can be done in Santa Cruz, you know, not only through your efforts, but through the efforts of people who are going to be following you in a shorter period of time, we're hoping, yeah.
Well, that's why we're counting on you and many others to keep us honest, you know?
Keep coming back.
It's, yeah, I mean, it, it can only be done as a group effort, there's no I and team.
Well, I got to tell you, the, one of the primary reasons that I, that I run, that I run for a city council is it gives me an opportunity every two years to knock on people's doors. And if I did that every day, they may get a little more suspicious about me than I would be comfortable with, but.
But what about once a month?
Once a month.
Like, once a month?
Once a month, there you go, there you go, you know?
I mean, I think that's a great idea.
No, that is, that is a wonderful idea. We've got maybe five minutes or so, I did want to mention the broader view about the general strike that's being planned. I know, Chris, you have all of that, Sandy, you just had gone to a meeting recently, so tell us a little something about what is being planned, because I think it's important.
I'm not part of the planning, per se, I'm just checking in with folks who are planning it. There's groups on campus, there's a group off-campus. It's, it's talking about a national day, a national general strike on the day, the inauguration day, January 20th, which is a Friday, so that's, that being talked about. So, and I ask folks to keep us in the loop, because I think as public officials, we need to have that communication with people, like, is this the direction we're going in? And, you know, can they, how can the council support people in?
And we have another minute or so, but Sandy, please remind us again about the importance of this sanctuary city movement, the things that are happening.
Sure, sure, and if it's possible, if the information that I provided can be.
I think our crack studio graphics folks are going to put that up.
There we go. Anybody who wants to get involved in the sanctuary city movement here in Santa Cruz, please contact Paul Johnston, and the People's Democratic Club has really taken the lead on this.
Shout-out to them, absolutely.
Yeah, so lots of people getting involved, I think the last meeting, there were like 40 people, and so it's really growing. We need to kind of solidify, codify some of the things that we have in principle on the books, and make sure that we move forward in Trump-landia.
And the last time we were threatened with Ronald Reagan's Central American Wars, 1985, is when we passed up pretty good sanctuary ordinance.
Yep.
And it was a five-to-two decision, as I, I just looked it up recently, and so, but it wasn't an ordinance, per se, it was a resolution, so it didn't have as, you know, the kind of teeth that we might want. And, you know, if we got 30 seconds, just let me say.
We do have 30 seconds.
You know, what this place is, you know, Santa Cruz is an amazing place, as we all know, for, we come here for various reasons, but it's, you know, it's an organic farming capital, really. Davis ceded that to us. They, when commercial, we went organic. We have this Redwoods meeting the coast, we have tide pools that I'm sending students to as an internship director at UC Santa Cruz, you know, that they gather, we have so much here to protect, and there's people knocking at the door every day in Santa Cruz, like they just found this place and like they want to develop it. And we, as caretakers of the city and the city council stewards, we need to figure out who we can work with and how the public benefits.
Beautifully.
From these folks who are going to develop.
Well said, and Chris and Sandy, wonderful to have you here, I look forward to your service, and.
Can I, before you get the last word, we have Steve Plach, Voices from the Village, who does amazing things in this community, and I want to acknowledge that, it's really important, that it's part of what makes Santa Cruz a wonderful place.
Well, thanks for being here and having this conversation with the community, this